It's right at three, so we'll go ahead and start to call the meeting to order. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a special meeting. Therefore, the items for the agenda are what we're limited to this afternoon. Our first item for commission action is to consider a request from the Independence Public Library to co-sponsor a Hungry Hungry Hippo event on Saturday, July 29th at 1:00 PM here at the Civic Center. So, I think, Jerry, you were gonna address this?
Which Jerry?
Jerry and Jerry.
Jerry and Jerry, The Jerry Show.
I was always very confused, confusing at our leadership class. They always sat us beside each other.
Oh.
I always let him answer. So, yes, we're having a Hungry Hungry Hippos tournament. And we would hope that the city would allow us to use the Civic Center for the event, 'cause it's really the only space that we can find that's quite big enough and has wooden floors, or slick floors, I guess. So, we are hoping that you would co-sponsor with us.
Is this the one where we're...I had volunteered, the commission, to...
Yes. I think we won by default.
I think, I was gonna say, didn't we win?
We haven't had it yet, but, yes. For the event that we had previously planned, yeah, you won.
Commission comments, questions?
No.
So, how much does it cost us to have the facility available for this? I mean, we have to have it staffed and stuff, right?
Yeah, it's...it would just be our labor charges. And we're just suggesting that when we co-sponsor events like First Friday or anything like that, we generally just...our part of it is just to supply it at no charge. It's a community event, fundraiser for the library, the city supports the library.
Right, okay.
So, if they raise a lot of money, you know, that'll help you guys out, too.
Yeah.
Okay. We're to entertain a motion, then, that we co-sponsor the Hungry Hungry Hippo event for Saturday, July 29th, starting at 1:00 here at the Civic Center.
So, moved.
Be second. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we co-sponsor the event for the library, fundraising event. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
And you can write us now.
Okay, I will.
That was too easy.
And this is not gonna give you any extra points on your score, so.
Can we negotiate that?
Now you tell us.
Since we're the first. Okay. Second item is to consider the water treatment plant improvements. I don't think we stalled quite long enough, did we?
That's all right.
Okay. So, we're to consider water treatment plant improvements, and any other discussion or action needs to be weakened weight. I mean, are...you prepared? What do you want?
That's up to you guys. Obviously, I don't talk to the project managers who lead the discussion. If I can discuss the structural issue, would you like me to start on that, on the structural issue?
That sounds like a plan to me.
We can start there, and then when the rest is here, then you can address it, or you can move on to that, by what you feel like, yeah, that's a choice.
Okay. Like, we go ahead and address the structural...
Might as well.
Yeah, structural issues.
Unless you wanna just tell us the history of your company or something.
Yeah.
If I can give you a little background on there.
Yeah.
Please.
All right. So, I'm Jeff Paulus, actually, like I said, structural engineer for PEC. Been with PEC about 12 years, to give you guys my brief history, helping on water treatment projects and other things.
Where's home for you?
I'm out of Tulsa, so I get a little shorter to drive than the rest of them, actually. I don't know what the commission knows about us, but we've been around for 50-plus years. We're about 300 people. We do full-service engineering, civil, a lot of water, a lot of treatment work, water, wastewater, structural as myself, mechanical, electrical, kind of run the whole gamut, except for architectural services. I'm trying to think. We do quite a bit of this type of work. I've probably personally done 30-plus projects, and that's just in the last 12 years, so give you an idea of the volume of water, wastewater work we do, fairly similar types of projects, so. Sarah, obviously, it'd be better to speak to that, being in that division of people, but it's kind of a brief, 30-second rundown of who PEC is. Is there anything specific you wanted to know about our experience?
So, this is kind of your claim to fame?
Well, I don't know about that. It's not necessarily our claim to fame, but it is one of our specialties. It's one of the things that we do quite a bit in. You know, we do market ourselves as water, wastewater, and treatment engineers, so certainly, I guess you could say, claim to fame, but...
Okay. Good enough.
Where have you done work in the past, specifically within some of the scope, or potentially part of the scope that we're looking at?
Sure. Geez, you know, I'm trying to think. Obviously, we've worked all over the region. We're really a regional firm, so most of our work, right, has been Kansas, Oklahoma, a little bit of Colorado, Missouri, stuff like that. We've done some...I'm trying to think. We've done some repair and improvement projects in Pittsburgh. Man, I'm trying to think of some of the other towns that I've worked on now, where we've done repair projects. Obviously, Wichita, I've done a handful of those. City Tulsa, I've done a handful of those. I mentioned Pittsburgh. I didn't come prepared with project lists, sorry.
Sure. We're just glad it's you on the spot, this meeting, and not us.
Yeah, that's right. Sarah didn't tell me I get to come, get to come speak. So, I'd have to go back, you know, Blackwell, we did an improvement project. I know, I know I'm missing a few, for sure. Especially regionally, there's been more than just Pittsburgh, Kansas. That's all I can think of right now, on the spot. Sorry about that.
Do you have a...did you bring a summary of the items that we're looking at, at our water treatment plant that you've been considering, or is...
I know, I didn't bring anything printed or any handouts. I'm sure they'll have something more prepared for that. I kind of know, you know, some of the stuff that was in the RFP, right? Obviously, I was involved in that response. I know that the settling basin, I don't know what the official title of it is, is one of the things that's up for review due to leaking or cracks in the basin. I can speak to that a little bit, obviously. I know, I know kind of what's going on there, in the sense that it's, it has to be taken down, really, for the inspection. That's one of the challenges, that the tank can only be down for so long, especially summer's high-volume time, and that's a tough time to do it. But until that kind of happens, and we can really put eyes on the bottom of it and see, you know, how bad it is, or what the real problems actually are, it's pretty tough to stand up here and say, you know, this is a good plan of action. You know, once we get into it, the plan of action, you know, we can say, maybe, that it's so degraded that repairing it's just a waste of money, and then we can have those discussions. Or, or maybe you get in there, and it's really in pretty good shape, and, and you can inject it with epoxy to seal some of those cracks and, and keep it kind of as-is. I can't really speak much to the plant operations and the impacts there. It's kind of beyond my expertise. So, you know, I'd be more on the repair of the physical aspects of it, the concrete, the finish, or anything like that, as well as any installation of any new structures that would be required as part of that. So, you know, I think, I think in the response, we kind of recommended that, that there should be like a study phase, kind of, or investigation phase, so at some point in time where we can take the, take the tank down, really, to kind of, you know, spend some time looking at it, seeing what the challenges are, figuring out how it's built. That's one thing, is, to this point, we don't really know what the construction is, even. You have some brick tanks on site. There's certainly some brick in this tank, at the perimeter walls. Is it a brick containment tank? Is it concrete? We don't know that yet. So, we need to spend a little bit of time digging into what's there, what's wrong with it, and then, then we can kind of formulate, from that point in time, what's the best way to move forward.
I was just wondering, you know, as we start talking, if we have a list, it's easier to go through than page by page.
Yeah, that's right.
I think we'll be discussing the individual items, and either we go through the booklet one at a time to make notes and generate a list. Kind of, you know, if we had a summary list, it...
That's right.
It's easier to keep track of where we are and what we've talked about. What, what's your discipline?
I'm structural.
Structural engineer?
Yeah, that's right. So, and unfortunately, like I said, I'm not, I'm not the project manager for PEC, so, you know, I didn't come with a list of what, what they wanted to talk about, but Sarah kind of has that, this list of items. And so, and I understand your concern about getting off track, or trying to make sure we cover everything, you know, can be tough. And unfortunately, I, I didn't have any of that stuff beforehand.
I think, as we start looking at this, getting an understanding of the different elements to see how the projects, project or projects could be approached, and...
Right, right. I know, I know some of the other challenges, right? I know there's kind of a few big things, big high points, right? Electrical services, one of them. That settling basin's condition and repair was one of them. Interior restrooms was another one of the items, or interior shower, I should say, shower addition, that I think is gonna be also kind of more difficult than it appears on the surface. So, if you have to install a shower that meets ADA, for example, I know that it's a, it's a plant, and it's able-bodied employees, right? I'm assuming primarily work there, you might be able to say that it's only able-bodied, and we don't have to be ADA compliant. May make some things easier if you have to be...if you don't, I guess, go ADA compliant, then that kind of restricts future, right, users as well.
Well, part of it, as we go through, I think this is one of the questions we discussed yesterday on ADA accessibility, maybe the, what would you call it, worker job description or requirements, so that, you know, instead of just blanking it ADA, look at specifically what the requirements...
Sure.
...will be to fulfill a position at the water treatment plant, and then only consider the features that would be the ADA that would comply with that, 'cause, you know, like, a wheelchair would be very difficult to work in the treatment plant, to go to different areas, or, you know, so...
Right.
Instead of doing every ADA requirement, then with our, our job restriction, because to perform the work, that would be determining the scope of ADA compliance.
Yeah, right.
But you'll make those recommendations, too?
Yeah, we can look at what some of those things are, right? Obviously, wheelchair is kind of one of the big ones, 'cause of space and rollover ability to access the shower and things like that.
Our job description, we will give you a copy...
Sure.
...so that you comply with it, instead of you telling us.
Right, exactly. And that will alleviate some of the challenges, I think, with that, with that aspect of what you guys want to get accomplished. You know, there's, you know, do you want to...I'm assuming public will never come in and need to take a shower, right? So, you don't have to worry about public individuals coming that may need to be ADA compliant. There's those things as well, to think about.
The building's not even ADA accessible, so...
Right.
You start addressing...
That's right.
...that, you open a whole...
That's right. And that, that will make it a whole lot easier, because if you have to, right, you know, if you have to improve ADA accessibility, or add an ADA-accessible shower, it doesn't fit kind of any, any of your existing spaces, and your addition becomes much larger, much more expensive. So, those are, those are things that I think that we can certainly explore.
I would just add, Kelly and I have already looked at the job description based on your comment, and not that we've done a thorough thing, but each job description was pretty specific about what was required physically. And I think just about every position out there required intense physical activity at times, lifting and walking and upstairs and downstairs, as I recall, maybe you could add something, but...so, we've looked at that, and they were job-specific when they were rewritten recently by the league, helped us rewrite those, so. But we'll, you'll look at them, we'll give them to you, and if there's any changes needed, we'll do that.
I think that's fine, and obviously, like I said, that's largely wheelchair access would be the biggest challenge, and if, you know, nobody, no employee's ever gonna fit that description because of the requirements of the job, then, then that will simplify that, that layout and space constraints, quite a bit.
The only question would be if we have the building ADA accessible for tours, or stuff like that. We do do tours and stuff, we're, right, I'm assuming we do for, you know, schools especially, but I don't know if we'd have to be...
Making the whole building ADA accessible is gonna be probably a challenge, right?
Yeah, that would be...
I think up into the filter areas, and things like that, right?
Maybe the initial entrance, but anyway, that's something we have to look at.
That's where reasonable accommodation...
Right.
...could come in, that for the, you know, the type of facility it is, and the limited number of tours, it wouldn't be reasonable to make it ADA compliant just for a tour.
Just a reasonable accommodation, maybe it helps somebody in the building, or something.
Right. And there's no expectation the public has access, which is kind of another, you know, big trigger, so. And so, we can look at, you know, we can look at what those requirements are, through, through either ourselves or through a consultant that would help us do ADA stuff, what, what would make sense to put in there, and what wouldn't. We can certainly go, you know, kind of work through those things with you guys, that, that job descriptions aren't gonna, you know, need, need people to accommodate those types of things. And then we can look at some options on...I know there was some desire, right, to kind of rework the existing restroom, and maybe find a place to slide a shower in there, but it's pretty full, and it's kind of a maze right now. There had been some talk about an addition, right, and then shifting break room, or it's a new break room, and then you move the shower over. We can kind of go through some options there for you guys to look at, that says, you know, here's a couple layouts, and here's where we can be most efficient with space, because obviously, for cost side, that's gonna be your biggest driver, is how much space you're adding, right? And so, once again, but that's gonna be kind of programming with your needs, you know, how many people do you need in your break room? How, you need one shower, I'm assuming, it's not multiple, right? So, we can go through those programming things, what, what meets your needs, and what you're trying to accomplish, and come up with options that, that make the most sense.
One of the previous discussion was to delay draining those storage areas, whatever you call them, until the fall because of summer demand.
Mm-hmm.
So, when you do that, is that a pretty quick process to determine whether or not that whole structure needs to be replaced, or what's the process that you would use to determine that?
Yeah, so, we need to see it, obviously, unless you just want to come in and say, "Right now, we're gonna replace it," right? Then we need to see if we want to try to salvage it or repair it. And so, it's my understanding, from operational standpoint and storage capacities, that the fall makes the most sense, right? Because your summer months are your heaviest usage, people are watering their yards, or, or whatever. And so, that's why the fall, taking it down, because it takes, it's gonna take some time to take it down, and some time to refill it. Our time to actually inspect it is a few hours, probably, maybe a day at the most on site, so it's not a large amount of time that we need to at least do the assessment. Now, it'll take some time, obviously, to take what we discover and go back and try to piece it together and, and see what we think is, you know, wrong with it, and how much effort we think it would take to repair it, put kind of a cost estimate to that repair, so you can balance that against a replacement. You know, it's 100-plus-year-old tank. It's beyond what its design service life was by quite a bit. So, you know, it may be just time when you get in there to, it needs to be replaced. I know there's some challenges with space. There's some things we can talk about if, if it comes down to that, if it is replacement, or that spate, what those space constraints are, and ways to accomplish that. You know, but once again, it all comes down to time and budget at that point in time, right? So, 'cause we can try to do some things, potentially, in place, where you partition off half of it, and you still use half of it. Basically, you have no redundancy right now. You have, correct if I'm wrong, but that, all the water goes through that one tank right now, correct?
Yeah.
So, so if we want to repair it even, there's gonna be some operational things that have to happen to repair it, because you can't, you're not gonna take it down for three or four days, make it all the repairs and bring it back up. It's just time constraints, not gonna happen. So, there's gonna be some discussions about what that whole process looks like to, to be able to take it down, to be able to make repairs or replace it. It's probably gonna be changes. Maybe through the whole thing, we can get you some, some dual tank setup, where you do have some redundancy, right? So, maybe that you could, in the future, do repairs at half of the time, and you're not shutting down the entire water plant, 'cause we're gonna effectively take down the whole plant.
So, there's an opportunity to modernize that whole...
Yeah, that's right.
...setup, which is, Terry, you guys would probably be real in favor of that, wouldn't you?
I'm glad you're here. You can talk about process side now.
Your reinforcements have arrived.
That's right. My reinforcements are here. So, and they can speak better to what, what it would take. Sarah can speak better to what it would take to, to, you know, split that, or, you know, even take it down partially, so that we can make repairs or make or do a replacement, depending on what we discover.
So, when were they built? Do you know? When were they...
The basins themselves?
Yeah.
1913.
1913.
Are they still under warranty?
Are they? Do you have a document on it?
I don't know. Is the contractor that built it still around? So, I, you know, we, I don't know, do existing drawings exist? I don't, I don't think there's any drawings of those basins, right? So, you know, that's something else, through, through the inspection, obviously, we can't tear up too much, but we, we might want to do a little bit of, not really demolition, but kind of do some destructive investigation, so pull up a little section of it that we can patch quickly in, within a day, just so we can really kind of see what that whole sandwich of the tank is. There was a point in time when, you know, it was basically lined dirt, essentially, right? So, it may be brick, and, and with a skim coating of concrete on top, and if that's the case, you're never gonna repair it sufficiently, it's always gonna leak, you know? So, that's, that's really, you know, we can't give much answers or directive, or really even tell you what your challenges are yet, until we get the opportunity to go figure out what you have. And so, that's gonna have to come, you know, in the fall, once we, once we have time to take it down, figure out what's there, figure out what, what's really happening, what's really going on, and then, and then we can have a much, much tougher discussion about the ways it's gonna be to fix it, because just, just intuition, experience, it's not gonna be a, put, put some epoxy in a few cracks and move on. It's, it's gonna have bigger challenges than that.
Are you gonna take core samples to see the type of construction as you talk of...
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm talking about by, you know, destructive investigation, is, is do a core sample through it, you know, maybe chip away some of...I know there's areas that are, for example, the walls on the north side are brick with, with a concrete, like a three-inch concrete liner. So, you know, maybe we, we start out with just pulling some of that liner off, and it's not a core, it's not truly a core sample, and then we see brick, and then we kind of know, we don't, we don't need to take a core sample of the brick.
But the bottom, is that what you were talking about, that it might be brick also?
Yeah, that's correct. The bottom might be brick as well, as kind of a liner with a skim coating to make it watertight. You can, we can always kind of keep what's there, so some options, or, like I said, epoxy inject, but that's really only gonna work if it's minor cracking and concrete. We might build, effectively build a new tank inside the existing one, so just use it as a form that stays there, and we build new concrete.
But what do you do in the meantime? I mean, during that construction process?
Yeah, that's, and that's the thing, operationally, we're gonna have to find some way to do it half at a time, and kind of limp along for a while, because it's, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah. Bottle of water?
No.
How long?
How long will we take? Possibly, talk about...
To replace it?
To repair it?
Well, it's hard to say without knowing what that, what those options are, but it's, it could easily be, you know, a couple of months, I think, you know, without, without really knowing, to say two to three months is, is not, that may even be aggressive.
So, you've seen jobs in the past where it took several months to get it?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's just a lot to do there.
Agreed.
You know, and we're gonna, basically, right now, because it's one basin and one flow, and we can't really just take it down, repair it, and put it all back, so we're gonna have to come up with some kind of separation. Can you bypass it long-term?
I've had it bypassed for three weeks.
Yeah, see, and that's three weeks, and I don't, maybe, maybe when we get into the repair operations, maybe there's one that fits in three weeks, but from what I know about it, from being on-site, I'll be surprised, if that's an option. Perhaps, but, but I suspect that, that what we have to end up doing to fix it is gonna be, even if we kind of leave it, it's gonna be very close to building a new tank, and that's gonna be more than three weeks. Maybe it'll surprise us, maybe, but, but it is an old, old basin, right? It doesn't meet any kind of current standards, so, you know, maybe it's a good opportunity to bring it up to kind of modern standards, right? The, the code requirements and, and the quality has changed a lot in the last 104 years. But once again, that's more than, more than three weeks.
When you say 104 years, puts it into perspective, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's right. You know, I mean, I hate, unfortunately, I get to be the bearer of kind of bad news, that I don't suspect it's gonna be easy, but we don't know that yet, so it's a little premature.
That's why your friends wanted to arrive late, so you had to be the one to tell us that.
That's right. Let me get up here and say that. So, but, but once, once we, once, once the fall comes around, and we can really look at it, then we'll really kind of know what we're up against, and then we can have a fair discussion about what it will take to, to make it better. So, at this point in time, it's kind of all speculation, but, but you can, obviously, like I said, I've done a half dozen, dozen, I don't, I don't even know the count, repair jobs. You kind of, you kind of know what you're getting into, you can kind of see it coming. It's gonna be a challenge.
So, you've seen other 1913?
Actually, I have not seen one that old, still in operation. I don't know about you. Have you seen one that old, still in operation? Okay, yeah. How old was Pittsburgh when we fixed it?
So, come on up to the microphone. You're, you're a part of us here, so people at home can hear.
I apologize for being late. We got one line traffic, and got to sit for quite some time, until it was our turn to move through the construction zone, so...
Well, he was brilliant. He really has covered everything we need covered.
His shoulders hurt.
But, yeah, as far as the tanks are concerned, yeah, we, we see older tanks at, at facilities all the time. We, you know, the thing is, is that they're constructed really well initially, so they last for quite some time, and when you're only putting water, or, you know, process through it, they can last for quite a while. And usually, you know, repairs over the years will help them, you know, stay in service for, for a long time, but then they just eventually get to that point where it's, you know, something more serious needs to be done, instead of just spot repairs.
Diminishing returns on repairs.
Exactly, yeah, diminishing returns, so...
Okay.
So, you want me to give a quick, brief update to the big folks?
Sure.
So, we talked briefly, obviously, you heard some discussion, we started a tank and came back to it a little bit.
Okay.
We talked briefly, a little bit, about the ADA challenges on the inside of the restroom. We didn't get into too much detail there, and they believe that, that through the job descriptions of the, the staff on-site, and it's not a public facility, that we can maybe work around some of those ADA things that wouldn't necessarily be, you know, ever, ever come across in employees. And so, they'd like some guidance from us about what, what we should, shouldn't work with.
Sure.
And then, I didn't try to cover Sean's electrical at all.
Well, I won't either, that's why he's here. But, okay, so...
Ma'am, can you identify yourself?
Absolutely. I am Sarah Unruh with PEC. I am in part of the water and wastewater department at our company, and this would be, this, I'll be the project manager on this project, so I'll be the face that you'd see all the time through the entire project.
And where's home for you?
Wichita.
Thank you.
Sean Schrader and I are both out of Wichita. Sean Schrader is our electrical engineer that would be on the project, and he's the one that came out and visited the site as well.
Okay, great.
I guess first, did you have any questions about any of the information that we had that we had included in the RFP or?
No, I think my question mainly dealt with the scope of the project and sequencing. And like we've been discussing, I forgot your name. What was?
Jeff.
What?
Jeff.
Jeff. I'd ask him if, if you had brought a handout that listed the different phases or different pieces of the project, other than what was in the, the proposal?
I didn't do anything. I do, I was kind of some notes on what my thoughts would be after listening to kind of what your main concerns are for the facility. Obviously, the settling basin is a huge issue as well as the electrical service being in the floodplain. And so those two being the primary issues, we would recommend starting with draining that basin, like Jeff had been talking about, to get an idea of what's all included in that and what needs to be done with that. The electrical service, the things, one of the things that's going to kind of drive what our sequences is what sort of funding you're going to want to pursue. I know in the scope of work, it talked about funding assistance and looking for options for those low-interest loans or whatever they might be, KDHE, USDA, those kinds of things. And they have a specific process kind of that you have to go through for that funding application. Is that something you guys are still interested in doing? Okay, so the way that that will work, I don't know if you've been through that process before. Okay, so you're very familiar with the documentation you have to provide ahead of time. With the KDHE loans, it's just kind of a pretty basic design memo of what we want to do. With USDA, it's a much larger preliminary engineering report. You know, those kinds of things that have to be prepared prior to a project being approved. So depending on what kind of funding you want to pursue, that kind of dictates what we do. For example, on the electrical side, you know, there's not going to be a lot of KDHE review, you know, of the electrical piece of it, whereas the process, they're going to be very concerned about making sure what we're doing in the process side. Or the restroom, you know, KDHE doesn't really have a deal of, you know, doesn't have a, a reason to look over that unless you go over KDHE funding. If you go through KDHE funding, everything has to be reviewed by KDHE. And everything has to be reviewed at some point by USDA. So depending on where your priorities lie and what kind of funding you want to go after, I think that kind of would dictate what your sequence of events would be. But the biggest thing is, I think, is going to be draining that tank and seeing what's going on with that first, so we know how far we're going to have to go with that process.
Well, I don't know, from where I've looked, you know, I'm just speaking for myself. The electrical looks to be a significant item that, if you're leaking water out of the basin, that's fine. If the main distribution panel with the Federal Pacific goes down, doesn't matter how good the basin is, you're not moving anything. So electrical issues seem to be, that needs to be at, at the start. And, you know, with the sequencing of draining the basin to do the inspection, if you put the electrical back after that, we're, we're like a year and a half, two years to address that in a project. So, you know, I think, I think as, as you say, they're totally separate. But electrical needs to be pushed. You know, I, I don't know if we need to take up a special offering to keep the pastors praying. It's operating on a prayer on that electrical.
Yeah.
And that's why, you know, as we start talking, we're more, you know, like to see the direction. Money is, is important. And, you know, keeping it running first and then looking at the options in the basin too, that we can address those and be, you know, be proactive as much as we can at this time. But we really have issues electrically that we need to address.
And I think the way that we could do that, when you apply for the loans, you know, you go after, you know, what your highest amount you think is going to be. And then, you know, what you spend is what you spend, what you don't is what you don't. So if you're wanting, if you're wanting to cover the electrical stuff under one big loan for everything at the wastewater, or everything at the water plant, but you want to go ahead and get started and kind of rolling on that, we can put together what we think kind of our worst-case estimates would be for all of the projects that you're going to include. And that could be the total loan amount that you apply for. And then as we get into things, if we notice that, hey, you know, we thought we were going to have to do this major work on the basin, but in reality, we only have to do this much, we can amend that loan right away through a paperwork process so that, you know, that can change. So in that essence, we can do the funding and kind of the initial design of all the electrical stuff concurrently so that, you know, you can get that taken care of right away.
I guess that's what we, was that last commission meeting we, we approved?
Wait, it was, what's 3.1 million? I think it was one. Is that, is that the limit for that particular loan? Or is that just that?
That was our original estimate, but remember, you guys asked Sean that when he was here and he said it could be easily amended up or down if needed. It's really not a difficult thing to do, so.
Okay.
So do you have a loan already?
We have just had the public hearing, but we haven't submitted the documentation after that, but we had the public hearing at the last meeting, so it's in progress.
And you guys are in very good shape. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This was more of a concern if you hadn't started that process yet at all. So if you've already gone through that process and you've gotten, you've gone through KDHE and kind of, is it KDHE that you've gone through? Okay, so if you've gone through all that process, then we're basically to the point where we can start producing plans and all of that to KDHE. So that's not an issue at all. So then on our end, we would just be administering that through the construction.
So I know enough about these USDA loans to be dangerous. What's the difference between a KDHE low-interest loan and the USDA loans? I know they do those USDA loans for hospitals, all kinds of different projects. Is, is there a huge difference? Is it interest-based?
Not a huge difference, I don't think. I don't think the interest rates are that different between the two. I know some USDA loans, it depends on what you do, but some USDA loans, they don't, it's actually like through a regular bank. It's just you go and get that loan through the bank as opposed to, you know, you guys go and get it, USDA goes and gets it. But, so there's that piece of it. But mostly, there's not really a huge difference. You know, from my perspective, the difference is the, the process is a lot different as far as the approval and the paperwork and what you have to put together. USDA is a lot, there's a lot more to it from that perspective than there is the KDHE side.
In terms of plans?
Well, yeah, like, like I said, you know, initially, for KDHE to initiate that process, there's just a, a base engineering report saying we need these things done. You know, something like that starts that process on the KDHE side. USDA is a much more extensive report and environmental reviews and all kinds of things that have to take place before they'll review the application. So in my opinion, I think KDHE is a really good way to go. You know, USDA is nice, particularly when you can get the grants. You know, they're income-based grants and stuff like that. But as far as the loan process, you know, I think KDHE, from my perspective and probably from your perspective for, for the process of it, seems to be a little easier.
Are there grants available that you're aware of, that you could help us apply for, that helps defray some of these costs?
The only grants that we're aware of at the moment have specifically do, do with like green infrastructure. And so I don't know, and, and some of those are through KDHE. So we can check in to see if some of this would apply as far as the electrical equipment. I don't think anything with the basin or, you know, dealing with the restroom and break room, that kind of stuff might. But if we're upgrading electrical equipment to be more efficient, that may. I'm not 100% sure, so I have to check and see.
On the, the electrical, maybe we can go through the different components that we're looking at, but one of the, the things I've heard mentioned, the energy of electric efficiency, operation that West Star or KPNL, if you operate below a certain efficiency, then you're charged a penalty. And looking at doing improvements electrically with that to improve our efficiency rating of operation, I think it's, like they want us to operate about 80%. So would that apply for a green?
That's the question I'm not sure of. Yeah, I'll have to check and see. And I don't know about West Star's policies. I'm not sure. So I'm going to let Sean answer that from the electrical side.
I assume what you must be referring to is probably power factor.
Right.
So I don't really see that as being anything with green. Typically, green would be, you know, renewable energy.
Okay.
But we can, if you do have an issue with power factor, we can get with West Star and see what you're running now. And with the design of a new electrical system, we can look at making sure we're, we bring your power factor up to above that minimum level to help with that.
So the electrical that we're, we're talking about, now, the power for the whole facility is in a rack that's down in the floodplain. That's where West Star service. And then from there, it's distributed to the building down below the hill. The pump, is that the pump house?
It's a high-service pump station.
And then it services a treatment plant on top of the hill. And then it goes somewhere else overhead.
It actually feeds, there's a cabinet sitting down there in the floodplain. One feed feeds the high-service pump station. There's another feed that feeds the low-service pump station or the river intake. There's also another feed that goes up and hits the clarifiers. And then another feed that comes up and hits the, takes care of the filter building.
So what we're, we're talking first is redoing the point of service to up at the?
Right. What we kind of looked at initially with the walkthrough with your plant personnel was looking at setting a new service on top of the hill. There's some open space up there by the parking lot. One nice thing about that is the fact that allows us to bring in a new service while keeping the existing service in operation at the same time. So you don't run into an issue where you got to make a quick changeover or you have to really worry about not having power to your equipment. With both of the services up and running, you can stage moving equipment over to the new service as things, you know, work out with your operations. And, you know, especially with the, the filter building, you already mentioned that you got the old Federal Pacific equipment in there. When we did our initial walkthrough, it looks like there's sufficient space, free space in the building where we could set a new service panel while keeping the existing service panel up at the same time. And then slowly migrate loads over, so you're not taking the whole building down at one time. So it's actually a pretty nice situation because there's a lot of times where we end up trying to put new equipment back in where existing equipment is. And you're trying to, you know, you're crunched for time. And so this makes it actually a much easier switchover than you might otherwise have.
Then would you feed underground to the other points or do you have to go overhead?
I would suggest going underground. I don't see a, a compelling reason to, to run overhead at all. And especially, you know, considering we're going on top of the hill and then we've got, you know, the, the park area adjacent to the plant. I think it'd be much more, you know, aesthetically pleasing to, to put things underground. It also makes it more reliable because then you don't have to worry about wind events, taking down poles or overhead lines.
And then in, in this would be a, a generator for the plant?
We could, yeah, you could also, we could set the generator up on top of the hill also. And then it would be able to pick up the entire plant.
How long is this transition? How long do you anticipate this ballparking? So if we started?
It, it's really going to depend.
In the fall, just say if that's possible or whatever.
A, a lot will depend on the, the plant operation. And as far as, you know, what can come down at what time, as far as making those transitions, as far as, you know, transitioning each piece of equipment over or like the, you know, the standalone buildings or not replacing the equipment, I would think you're probably talking maybe an eight-hour changeover to make that change to the new service because you can go ahead and run your conduit and your wire and everything. And then all you got to do is take it down and make the, the final connections. That's kind of one of the benefits of being able to have both services up at the same time. As far as probably overall on the electrical, you're probably talking with getting your duct banks in and getting the equipment, maybe the four to six-month range time on the, at least the electrical part.
Is that what acquisition of a generator do? Are they pretty red?
Because the generator and, is probably going to be lead time of probably 12 to 16 weeks. So, but you get that started early, they can go ahead and get all their conduits run, all the wire pulled and ready to go. So you can just, you know, set the equipment and then make your connections.
Would you, were you thinking natural gas or diesel generator?
My preference would be to go to the diesel. A diesel generator, number one, you have an onsite fuel supply. A natural gas, the fuel supply isn't onsite. So if you have an earthquake, you have, we've had issues where in the winter, a valve in the natural gas distribution system will get frozen shut and will shut off natural gas distribution to a whole town. We've had that happen before. So then you don't have any onsite power. And then a natural gas generator typically is going to be bigger than a diesel and also more expensive since they are bigger, since natural gas doesn't have the same energy potential as diesel. So to me, I, I, my preference would always be a diesel over a natural gas, especially when you start getting to a bigger size.
How big a fuel tank would you have on site?
Typically, we would recommend at least a 24-hour runtime for the fuel tank. So depending on.
500 gallons?
We haven't really looked at the, the size of the generator yet. But my guess is probably going to be in the, probably four to, you know, maybe 600 gallon range. And typically, it would be a belly tank that sits below the generator. So you don't have a, a separate.
Something works into the, okay. So that cuts out any EPA requirements of containment dike or ground monitoring?
Yeah, it, all the above-ground tanks are dual-wall. They got leak detection inside the interspace, interstitial space. I haven't done a underground tank in, oh my gosh, I can't remember the last time. Just to the fact that due to, you know, environmental concerns and, you know, it's, it's visible, you, you know, easy to maintain that way. It's, it's a, a common installation practice anymore to put them above ground and make them a, a tank underneath the, the set itself.
So with the, you're kind of looking at maybe three groupings, the electric, the building with the restroom, and then the basins? Would, is it SCADA, SCADA? Is, would that be included in with the electrical upgrade? Or is that a separate component that would be bid?
The SCADA is really a, a separate component. It doesn't really, we'll interface the, the new service and with, and the generator into SCADA so that you can monitor the generator set, see if it's running. Do you got low fuel? Do we got an alarm? But as far as, you know, the, the SCADA upgrades and replacement that, you know, Pedradde has proposed, it's, would be really, it could be a separate project from the, the electrical upgrades. They don't need to, you know, they're not really tied to each other.
Okay, so you could bid that as a component just to the vendor or vendors that need to be?
So in the scope of work, I'm assuming that there's repla, those panel replacements, upgrades of remote sites? I mean, is this just at the water plant or is there other? I mean, is it? The whole scope, yeah?
The only site we visited was the water plant on the electrical side. So you have down in the high-service pump station, that equipment has looked fairly new. We didn't go into the low-service pump station. So I can't speak to that equipment. But, and I know the equipment for the clarifiers is relatively new. Really, the panel replacement would be in the filter building. You've got the MCC. You've got the MCC, the motor control center that needs to be replaced. And then you also have a couple old Federal Pacific panels that should be replaced. And I know the operators have already, you know, mentioned that they're having problems with the motor control center trying to find replacement parts. There's actually cubicles they've got marked that they can't use because it doesn't have the required components. And Federal Pacific is really a brand that has been known for not act, not operating when you actually need them to operate. So anytime we see Federal Pacific, we definitely recommend, you know, that the owner replace those whenever they get the chance. So, so you really need to replace it just because of the age of the equipment in the filter building itself, so.
It seems to make good financial sense to make sure that we replace everything and upgrade everything as, as much as we can so that, I mean, if this, I don't know how long the electrical service has lasted, I'm assuming 40, 50 years. Is that pretty close, do you know?
I don't know the.
Sixty-six, sixty-seven.
Sixty-six, so we're in 50 year range.
Right, and typically, you know, service equipment is 20 to 30 year range.
Yeah, and, and that's where I'm headed. We may as well do it, do it right because the costs aren't gonna go down.
No.
And include as much as we can with the loan process because it's not gonna get any cheaper if we go through. Plus then that sets, we'll be dead and gone.
Somebody else have to deal with it, so.
He's so cheery that way.
I'll let it be a hundred, but just give me something, drink of water. But you see the point.
So what, in the, the building down below, can you elevate the panels? Would you have to put a, a platform to get it above the floodplain? So how do you propose handling?
I guess that was in something that we had really looked at. It was the, it was my understanding, basically, was to get the, the main service out of the floodplain. You could possibly raise the equipment up. By raising it up, then you would have to, you know, build a, a platform around it also. So we could take a look at that. If you do that, that's gonna be a longer downtime versus just refeeding that building. So we'd have to look at that as far as how long the facility could be down. Or if you're really looking at that, we may have to come in and, and set a new panel down there on, you know, raised up and then migrate the loads over so we're not taking the whole building down at one time.
Right, if you, if you've got to replace a panel down there anyway, would you put the new panel high enough so water wouldn't get in it? Then could you use the old box as a pull box to rewire from there or actually put in a?
I'm trying to think, when we were down there, I think most of, all those circuits coming out were fed overhead. So I think you'd be better off to reroute it.
Yeah.
Overhead to the new panel. And then at some point, you know, demo of the, what's, they're existing.
Right.
Is everything in that panel service in the floodplain? So all the equipment that's running off?
It's, it's in the building, yeah, so. The only thing you would do is you would protect that equipment from the flood and from the water and having to replace it.
Water got in it, in the panel, just the 2007, what about the 76 and 86 floods? They, it was out of the, the, just.
Oh seven was the old times, they were ready.
Oh seven, okay.
Is that the highest you'd seen it at that time?
As high as I've heard it's been, I would say.
Well, heard. I mean, is that your experience, Terry, with 2007?
Oh seven?
Yeah.
Seventy, seventy-six and eighty-six were.
Eighty-six was a year, yeah.
Eighty-six, we lost two lift tanks, well, sure, lift tank, but didn't come close to that.
Okay.
I mean, oh seven, when we flew over the floodwater premium plan, I could see it was very, copper was broken, it was.
I remember that, yeah. Well, that's the 100 year flood, maybe 500.
Actually, it exceeded the 500 year floodplain.
I say, maybe that's the 500 year flood.
Yeah, it exceeded the 500 year floodplain.
Wow.
And part of that issue was the board that should have taken, discussed that.
Didn't speak very well.
I have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Came up yesterday about the chlorine gas and the tank there and how, did you review that, look at that, is that part of the RFP or anything? I was just curious on.
We didn't look specifically at the chlorine tank, no, but.
I'm sure they, they have to do a press.
Yeah, we can help you with whatever's going on out there. That wasn't something we looked at specifically before.
I understand, I didn't look at, I understand it's not enclosed or anything like that, it's open.
I think as we go through the project, and we've been talking about strategic plans and master plans that as we do this, we can develop maintenance schedules or some way that we can plan, you know, in five years, what are we gonna need to look at? We're 10 years out so that we can avoid having this happen again. We can leave a, leave something for the, the next operators, the next commissioners to take and build from that they'll know that, well, like, like the mayor asked about the life of the panels. So in 30 years, they'll know that when we get to 25, start considering or it's gonna have to be.
Right.
Be addressed, not wait till, you know, we need a fuse, but there aren't any more in the nation to do it. Now what are we gonna do?
It's nice to not manage by crisis. It'd be nice to manage by, by plan.
Yes, certainly.
And I think that's our intent. Matter of fact, I'm sure that's our intent.
Yeah, and that's definitely something we can do as we go through the process. You know, we looked at specific things while we were out here the first time. And, but as we go through the design process, we can develop that kind of a document for you that just kind of gives you an idea of the age of everything you have and, you know, what, what you should be looking at in the next five years, 10 years and beyond.
And the same as the, the chlorine building. If, if that's where it's moving in that direction, then if we knew a timetable to, that we would have to operate on it, then, you know, we can progressively get to that point, not wait till you get a consent agreement from EPA that you've got 12 months to get that enclosed, period, you know?
Yeah, certainly.
So we've talked about the electrical panels, we've talked about the basins. What, what else do we need to discuss here?
Uh, the other things that were included in the project were the reconfiguration of the administration building to add a restroom and a, or shower facilities and a break room. And then the other thing that was included in the RFP was site security. There was specific discussion about security fencing or some sort of security around the facility. So as far as the administration building is concerned, that would be something that we hire an architect as a sub consultant to do. So if there's specific questions about ADA requirements and all that, unfortunately, I don't know the specific answers to that, but that's something we will work through specifically with the architect to determine what the requirements are. I do know from experience, we just finished a wastewater plant job where we had to look at replacing some doors because they were in really bad shape. And the question came up, do we need to be making these wider doors for ADA requirements? And the answer to that was no, because they were into process buildings where you're not gonna, you know, the general public is not gonna get into. The question I don't know with relation to your, you know, main building or your administration building is, the public can come visit you at that building, you know, just to visit, you know, your water plant staff if they have a question or what have you. Question is, how far does that requirement go? You know, within the facility, does it extend to the showers because they're not there for, you know, specifically for the public's use? I know in other facilities that we've constructed, you know, we'll have an administration building and there's kind of a separation between where the public typically comes and then where the, the staff is. So, you know, beyond, you know, when the public comes into that door, you know, that door or the conference room that they can use, the public restroom needs to meet those requirements. But once we go past that into the facility and the treatment part of it, it doesn't need to meet that. So we'll just need to kind of do a little research and talk with the architect on the project to determine, you know, what applies and what doesn't in this case. And then that'll determine how far we need to go. And so, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question, but.
And some of the, as we were looking yesterday, there was discussion about just reconfiguring spaces of the office becoming.
Correct.
Break room and a, and then capturing some existing space for an office.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think, you know, my concern first is operation, of course, break area and getting a suitable place for the staff to, to eat. But, you know, monitoring how, you know, I'm an architect, so I know how we think. You know, give us an inch and we're gonna take a mile. And, you know, we can get carried away and with our money, we're really wanting to do the best we can in production of water and for our people and, and then the staff comfort, but, you know, not go overboard with design of auxiliary facilities.
Certainly, certainly, yeah, we understand that. I know the purpose behind this is to be able to give your staff, number one, a safe place for them to eat because the lab is not a good place to do that, unfortunately. That, and then also the ability to be able to shower before they go home, working with all the chemicals and all that good, you know, all that stuff during the day. So we understand that the primary focus is the safety aspect and we need to, function plus safety is what that needs to accomplish.
Yeah, as we go through kind of developing priorities so we can evaluate with available funds.
Right.
Yeah.
So it appears as if the next step is a conceptual design? Is that correct? Is that?
Yeah, I think what we would, yes, that would be what our next step would be. So what we would want to do is kind of confirm, you know, the parts and pieces, the scope that you want us to cover in that design. And then what we would do is prepare a contract that goes around that scope. If you want to us to address everything that's in this proposal, everything that we talked about, then we'll prepare the contract based on that, which is, you've got our range numbers in here. So we'll prepare that contract and, but our first step would be the conceptual design. Since you've already got the loan going and that process is going and we don't need to worry about that piece, then we can just go straight into the design part. So our first step would be the conceptual design piece, yes.
We'll, we'll need assistance continuing on.
Right.
You know, we had the hearing, but there's documentation and.
Yes.
You know, impact studies and things that need to be done.
Yes.
Also, they said we need to do that for the entire city. So in case there's any leftover funds that they want to do a water project.
Oh, okay.
Part of the town, then they could.
Okay.
Include that. So we'll need help with following through with the rest of that. We just had our on-call engineer help us until.
With the initial piece.
Somebody under contract.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So what we would do on that piece is we'll just need to sit down and find out where you're at, you know, what all you have done and what KTHC still has required of you. And then we would step in and do that part while we're starting the conceptual design so that it all goes at the same time.
But the basins, right now, we're looking at is a, a proposal for the study.
Correct.
Of the, the structural integrity.
Right.
Of the basin.
Yes, that would be the first piece of this. So the contract that we would provide you now, if you want us to just do that for now and then we do a separate contract later for the actual design, whatever that ends up being, we can amend that contract to include whatever that needs to be, we can do that.
Don't you think we need to have the study first to determine whether it's a repair or replacement?
That's the most fair, that's, that's the most fair option to the city, right?
Yes.
We can set the fee to cover whatever we might come up against, but that's not really fair to you guys and what, we're gonna cover ourselves, right? So if, if the city's cost, the city's expense, the most fair way to do it is just fund the study right now, let's find out what we really need to do, then we can go to the next phase. Once we really know what our scope is, we don't have to cover the slide, the amount of possibilities.
Yeah, so that's what we would do. Our initial scope here would just cover the investigation of the basin to determine what the design project would be and then we can prepare something separate for that.
It'd be nice to know what the cost, you know, what the whole cost would be if you, I mean, as Leonard had suggested, there's the electrical part of it and then there's the basin part of it. May be real cost effective to put it all together, may not be.
From our perspective, it, they're separate enough things that it really doesn't, it's not gonna affect our fees one way or the other, whether it's all in one project or we end up doing this part first and then adding this into it. They're separate enough things that it, it's not gonna matter, so.
And the design cost to do a repair is gonna be different than the design cost to do a replacement and.
That's correct.
That our study is gonna be the, the key.
Same, same.
And also on the front end, as far as your top cost estimate for total project, we can always throw in some sort of cost estimate for a new basin because that would be worst case cost, right? If repairs are expensive, we're not gonna be able to do a basin. If repairs are cheaper than the US, the initial cost estimate makes sure that your one document is covered.
Yeah, see, that's what, that's where I said it is, I'm not sure how that loan, how that particular loan works. I'm assuming you can amend it.
You can.
As, as many times as needed.
The amendment process is really, it's a one sheet, it's a paperwork thing. We've amended loans both ways on things where additional projects have come up that, you know, cities have needed to fund and so we've amended it up a little bit. We've had cities where projects have come in enough under budget that we ended up adding stuff, you know, later under the, so we, you know, that's, you know, a, a simple process as well. Or the other way around, you know, if we end up not needing all that money and you wanna reduce it down, we can do it that way. But it's a paperwork thing. Once you have the loan in place with KTHC, it's a paperwork deal, so.
Well, I'm good with what they said as far as doing the study and coming up with what we need. That seems to make real good sense.
Yep.
How soon could you bring a agreement back to us?
Um, I think we could put an agreement together next, probably next week. When's your next, do you want to do something for your next commission meeting?
Well, I was just trying to, to figure on schedule. I mean, we have a meeting on the 22nd, but we sent our packets out on Monday.
So your next meeting would be the first Monday or first?
First, the first Thursday.
Thursday in July?
Second, second and fourth.
Second Thursday, okay, second Thursday.
A week from today.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely have stuff for you for that meeting.
It'd have to be Monday.
Yeah, because we send, we have to send the packets out on Monday before the meeting.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem. I think we can put stuff together for you next week so you show in front of time for the 20th.
Well, it is next week.
Okay, hold on, sorry.
Have it ready.
I'm talking July. Oh, you're talking July. I'm sorry, I'm talking.
I didn't think you were talking.
Next week.
Yeah, no, I, we won't be able to get it in time for the 22nd package. So July 13th.
Yes.
If you could get it to us the Monday before that.
Not a problem. We can do that. Sorry for the confusion.
That's okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, we can definitely have it in time for that meeting.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be the 13th, so we'd need it by the 10th.
Okay, yeah, that's not a problem at all.
Okay, are we good with that?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And then do you want us in attendance at that meeting to go through the contract? Or to discuss it, or you just wanna look through it and if you've got questions, let us know?
We want Jeff here, he knows everything.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
If we're gonna act on it, have somebody.
This Jeff or that Jeff?
Both.
Yeah, if we're gonna act on it, it'd be nice to have somebody representing.
Yep, I will plan to be here.
Questions.
Okay, I will plan to be here, sure.
We're gonna spend a lot of money, so we need to.
Understand.
We need to understand it so that we can.
Yeah.
Fairly articulate it to our taxpayers.
And there are other, are other routes besides 400, which are very scenic, by the way, so you might consider that.
I think I will. Because I'm pretty sure that's gonna be under construction for a long time.
Decades.
Well, it took us a while to get out of town and be, to begin with on 400 because they've now rerouted everything for the turnpike and for this and for everything, so, yeah.
Okay. So I think we're, are we good? You good, Greg?
Yeah.
I mean, we're all good.
Yep.
We got a good plan, we're, know the direction we're headed. So we're looking to see what we can discuss then for the 13th meeting.
Sounds very good.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Yeah. So with that, that includes our agenda items, so I would entertain a motion then to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And, oh, hot outside.